...person as well as live streamed on the district's YouTube channel. And it coincides with the CDC who recommends fully vaccinated individuals wear face coverings, in addition to indoor masking for teachers, staff, students, and visitors. Therefore, coverings or face coverings are required for all individuals that are currently in attendance here at the meeting. So we'll go to 2.0. Dr. Lake, do we have any changes to the agenda?
We do not.
All right. Given that, do I have a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Matt, second by Kathy. All in favor?
Aye.
All pose. All right. Motion carries. We'll move to the Pledge of Allegiance, and I would like to invite our Crestwood Elementary students, and correct me if I don't say this perfectly, but Mackenzie Cuthrin and Co- Catherine? Okay. And Liam Dameron come forward and help us, and for those, stand if you're able.
Yeah, there we go.
All right, guys.
(inaudible) United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Thank you. So we'll move to 4.0, which is the actual special recognitions. Crestwood Elementary this evening is being honored, and I believe Principal Kit Norton is here to lead us in the recognitions.
Can you hear me okay? Yeah. Oh, hi there. Good evening, everybody. First of all, thank you to our Limburg leadership and our school board for the opportunity to recognize our most valuable resource in our school community, our teachers and our students and our staff. We really appreciate that. And first, I'd like to call Liam Dameron. Come on up here with me. You can stand right here. There we go, Liam. It's here for Liam. So Liam, Liam is a third grade student at Crestwood Elementary. He is absolutely a ray of sunshine. He greets staff and members and students alike every day with a big smile, and he says, "How you doing?" And he actually sticks around for the answer. When Liam's, he said, "Yeah." When Liam started kindergarten, he had a lot of challenges with language and expressing himself, and he made, which made participating in the classroom pretty challenging. Despite those difficulties, students still wanted to work and play with Liam because of his huge smile, his warm heart, and his great attitude. Liam has worked very hard over the last three years to improve his language skills, and he is growing each and every year by leaps and bounds. Our ELL teacher, Mrs. Bridwell, shared, "Liam is always so sweet and kind. He's one of the happiest kids I've ever worked with, and has always has a smile on his face. Just this morning," and I mean just this morning, "he held the door open for our students during arrival without me even asking. He's a good friend to everyone." Mrs. Pickler, his classroom teacher, said, quote, "Liam is a role model to our classroom with his great behavior, his work ethic, his friendly personality. He always gives 100% in everything he does. He loves telling stories and sharing his thoughts with his classmates. His classmates say that he is very nice, he's brave, kind, and always sharing. He's a friend to everyone. Liam's parents are always so supportive of Crestwood teachers and staff. They honor, they are involved in his education and make a positive impact on his learning. We honor them and appreciate their partnership. And Liam, we are so lucky that you're a part of our Crestwood family, and we're so very proud of you. Thanks for making every day a little brighter for all of us. Limburg community, let's hear it for Liam."
So Liam, so Liam, we have your certificate with your name on it, and says that you were the Student of the Month, so congratulations for that. And then we have some spirit wear for you as well. So there you go. T-shirt. All right. You're welcome, my friend. I think we're gonna get a picture. Hang on. We'll get a picture.
Right in the center there?
Right. Right between, right there. There we go.
All right, my man. Good job.
Thank you, Daniel, too.
Next, I'd ask Mackenzie Cuthrin to come on up here and join us at the front. It's here for Mackenzie. Mackenzie is a fifth grade student at Crestwood. Mackenzie, we're so proud of you. You are exceptional, kind, compassionate friend to others. You go out of your way to include others and create a sense of belonging in our school. We want to honor your incredible progress you have made since your very first step, your very first step into Crestwood. You've demonstrated growth in so many ways. You have developed problem-solving skills, which has allowed you to help others navigate difficult situations. Mackenzie is a leader in our school. She recently filled out an application to be selected as a school social media leader. Remember that application? Here's what she said in it. "Oh, by the way, social media leaders help us promote everything that we do in our school, and our friends, they go out to seek interesting stories to share and promote on our platforms." On her application, she said, "I want to be a social media leader because it would be a good fit for me, and I like taking pictures. I have no experience, but I'm willing to learn." I'm gonna try that on my application. From her classroom teacher, Mrs. Sari, "I so appreciate that Mackenzie arrives at school each day with a smile, ready to learn. She always tackles new challenges seriously and eagerly with a positive attitude. Most importantly, she understands the power of yet and never gives up. She demonstrates the growth mindset that is so important when it comes to succeeding in skills that are essential in life and in school. Mackenzie, you are reflective and accept feedback from others to improve both academically and behaviorally. You embrace the 'we all make mistakes and fail forward' growth mindset, which is exactly how we learn. You've mastered being able to openly reflect on your own growth needs and emulate that mindset in so many areas of our school experience. In addition, you know how to use your resources to appropriately advocate for yourself and advocate for others. You have a sense of justice and are always finding a way to make the world around you better. You have come so far since your time you started with us at Crestwood, and we're excited to celebrate and honor you as a fifth grade leader at our school. There's no limit to what you can do, Mackenzie. It's an honor to be a part of your educational journey. Limburg community, let's hear it for Mackenzie."
Mackenzie, we also have a certificate recognizing you as Student of the Month for you, and then we also have spirit wear for you as well. So congratulations and great job. All right. We're gonna get a picture. Thank you, kid. Dr. Lake.
Before we have our Teacher of the Year come forward, first, we want to send our thanks and congratulations to Mr. DC for an amazing year at Crestwood as our 2020-21 Teacher of the Year, and his continued role as our Missouri Teacher of the Year. It's been quite a ride, and in fact, he's on a ride right now. I think DC is in DC, right in here tonight, representing our school and our district community. So we're so grateful for him to be doing that. So now for our Teacher of the Year for 2021 and '22, Mrs. Joy Long. Would you please come forward? So Mrs. Long is one of our school counselors, our amazing school counselors at Crestwood Elementary. Mrs. Long, you are compassionate and professional who always goes above and beyond to help our school families when they need it most. This past school year was difficult on so many levels. One of the biggest challenges we faced was ensuring our students and staff members felt connected to our school, especially our students and teachers in that virtual learning environment. Mrs. Long, you saw this need within our school and took a major role to ensure our ARC students and our staff felt and remain connected to our school community. You thought outside the box and developed creative ways for ARC families and students to thrive. You hosted lunch bunches and opportunities with ARC students to help them nurture valuable relationships with each other. This summer, you even created and developed opportunities for former ARC students to visit Crestwood to help with their transition back to in-person learning this year. You're always helping our students and our staff throughout the day. We know you're very busy balancing two schools and appreciate all you do for our students. Mrs. Long volunteers in the community. She helps deliver supplies, food, and materials to families in need. She always goes out of her way to meet students who might be struggling and are partnering with parents who are struggling to know how to better support their children. She is deeply rooted in equity and justice work, has an incredible passion for seeing and meeting the needs of our students with diverse backgrounds so that they are seen and they are experiencing a true sense of belonging at Crestwood. Mrs. Long does an amazing job working with parents and staff in IEP meetings. So Joy, you're constantly striving to get better and help our entire community. You're loved by our students and just, you know, just the right words to say when they're needed the most. It's truly an honor to partner with you and to serve the students and staff of our, and families of Crestwood Elementary. Limburg community, let's hear it up for our Teacher of the Year, Mrs. Joy Long.
So we have your certificate for recognizing you as Teacher of the Year, and then we also have a $25 gift certificate for spirit wear for you. Congratulations.
So now for our Support Staff Person of the Year, and I'll have, instead of looking at me, you can look up on the screen and see Mrs. Sally Dahlman. Before I do that, though, we do want to acknowledge and honor Mary Core, who was our 2020-21 Support Staff Person of the Year. We really appreciate you, your voice for the voiceless Mary, and your caring professionalism. Thank you, Mary. She's here tonight, too. Our 21-22 Support Staff Person of the Year is Sally Dahlman. Sally serves as our Technology Building Assistant, and Sally, she's not able to be with us tonight, but we'd like to tell you about some things that people said about her. Sally worked in many unplanned hours this past summer, coming in whenever she was asked to ensure that we were able to successfully transition to one-to-one. Last year, she dedicated days, weekends, evenings. She stood in the rain, all post-lockdown, to ensure that our ARC students and in-person students had what they needed to be successful. She fills in and jumps in to support our students for lunch and recess duties. She is always willing to go above and beyond. She's volunteered at our school events and gets involved with activities outside the school day. Sally has amazing relationships with students. That's the most important thing that she really gives to our school. She treats them with love, respect, and care. Sally continually pursues learning to improve her skills so that she can continue to provide technology support to our school in a new, in new and innovative ways. A quote from Mr. Ian Fairley, our new design lab teacher, quote, "I can always rely on Sally whenever I have any questions about any form of technology. She's helped me in countless times with the internet, with internet issues, iPad apps, and device requests. I know that I can reach out at any point of the day and have my issue solved that very same day, even if she's off the clock." We won't tell that to HR, but that's what she does. "Since technology is such a huge part of my class, it's awesome to know that I have someone who never hesitates to do anything she can to help out. Sally has been and continues to be a huge asset, not only to my class, but the entire school." Limburg community, thank you to Sally Dahlman.
Thank you, kid, and congratulations to all the recipients. You know, that's one of the great things that we do here is acknowledge the wonderful things that the staff and teachers are doing, and, you know, the students, and really, you know, that's what we're here for. So it's great to see. So at this time, we'll take a short break, so everyone who was here for the recognitions and doesn't want to stay for the business part of the meeting, which is amazing and captivating, but we understand if you would like to dismiss yourselves and head out for the evening. All right. We'll move on to 5.0, which is Resolutions. We do have one consent resolution this evening. That's the American Education Week, which is November 15 through the 19th, and this is the 100th Annual Observance of American Education Week. So that's amazing. Do I have a motion to approve the resolution honoring American Education Week?
So moved.
Motion by Kathy, second by who's second? By Mike? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
All pose. All right. Motion carries. Thank you. And we'll move now to 6.0, which is Citizen Comments Regarding Agenda Items. Looks like we do have a couple on agenda items, so I'll call your name and bring you up. Just remember that you have a three-minute time limit, and we ask everyone who's speaking and everyone in the audience just to be respectful. We like this time in the meeting, and we like to hear what people have to say, but we just want to keep it orderly and respectful. So the first one is Hafie Gardner.
At the July 13, 2021 meeting, I reviewed the scientific method and gave the board an assignment. I asked for proof that masks work, providing scientific proof. I look forward to your findings. At the August 20, 2021 meeting, I reported an incomplete because the information the board provided was not scientific, just guidelines. Guidelines are not necessarily science-based. I think guidelines are based on emotion, perception, a belief, an agenda, and possibly propaganda. I believe guidelines are used to get we, the people, to accept the guidance, even if flawed or false, a method of herd control. Masks do not, I repeat, masks do not stop viruses from entering the body, period. Science proved this is a fact. So we have an illness with a 99-plus percent recovery rate, and children are the least likely of all age groups to die from the flu, also known as COVID-19. So why the mask? I have three simple questions for the board, and I expect your response, which will be my topic, topic of the discussion at the next meeting. One, board members, do you wear a mask at your office day job, when sitting at the desk, super-spreader events, family gatherings? Two, why are you mandating masks in school? Three, board members, if I choose not to wear a mask in class, what will be my consequences from the school authorities? What legal documentations must my parents provide to identify your legal consequences for forced masks wearing? Four, I was wondering, do illegal alien border crossers need to wear a mask in school? Time will tell who was right on this issue, and I trust those in positions of responsibility and authority will embrace the truth. God bless America, and God help the students of Limburg School District.
Next speaker, Kristen Gardner.
Hello. It is my understanding that the board members do not receive compensation for sitting on the board. I am asking these questions be responded to by each board member. How many children do you have enrolled in the school district wearing masks? What is each of your personal motivations for being on the board? What benefits do you receive for being on the board? Do you intend to run for another term, and why? If school choice legislation passes and parents control the school vouchers, are you prepared for potential exodus of students currently under your control? My hope is to have responses for each member. This information will be valuable so parents can have a better understanding of the board members, the reasons for their positions, and identify those deemed necessary to remove. And I'll give you guys the list of the questions.
All right. Thank you for addressing the board, and we'll continue with the meeting. 7.0 is Communications, so we'll start with Calendar Events. Secretary Watts?
Okay. So the most exciting thing we have is that tomorrow, October 22nd, and Monday, October 25th, there's no school. And I'm sure students are excited and staff, and hope everyone enjoys the weekend. We have several board advisory meetings coming up. We also have a superstar among us, and that's Dr. Lake with his virtual listening and learning tours. And the next one will be October 28th, and the following, October 27th, and then October 28th. We are also off school November 1st, and something that was started two years ago, I think, is the Limburg Schools Foundation Community Breakfast. And this breakfast is held to support our students through the Limburg Schools Foundation, and that's November 12th. We have two parent speaker series coming up, November 2nd and November 16th. And then on November 8th, at our next board meeting, after our regular board meeting agenda has been adjourned, we will have an educational meeting for candidates who might be interested in running for the school board. We have two positions that would be open in April.
All right. Thank you. Next, report of any meetings, so any state meetings or other meetings, any parent group meetings or anything that you'd like to report on that you've attended. No meetings? Okay. So we'll go to announcements. We do have one announcement, and it's regarding the Board of Education Information Session and Candidate Filing Dates. As stated, we hold a candidate information session immediately following the board meeting on November 15th. Interested residents are encouraged to attend and learn more about that. Also, it's important to note that the filing dates have changed. So filing will open at 8:00 a.m. on December 7th and close at 5:00 p.m. on December 28th, so please check the official filing information for specific on that. And the ballot order of candidates who file on the first day of filing will be determined by random drawing. So, you know, historically, in the past, you had to be first in line, but now it's just a random drawing regardless of when you come to sign up in a period of the first day. Candidates who file on the first day then will be in order of when they file after the first day. All right? And then 7.04 is the review of the upcoming Board of Agenda, or Board Meeting agendas. So back to you.
So as I stated, our next regular Board of Education meeting is November 18th at 7:00 o'clock, and our tentative agenda includes an audit report, business items such as HR, financial reports, and tentatively also, we have four records, four record items. And then, as we've stated twice, afterwards, we'll have our candidate information session.
We have no member appointments tonight, so we'll go to 7.06. So that's the October MSBA Report, so Colin.
Hello, everyone, and welcome to the Missouri School Boards Association's Board Report for the month of October. We thank you for the opportunity to share some news and information during a few minutes of your board meeting. We begin with a look at the mental wellness challenges facing many of our teachers and school district staff. The continuing COVID-19 pandemic has been stressful for everyone, but especially for school personnel. Addressing mental wellness issues among staff has become a major priority for school districts. Rachel Jones is the manager of trauma-informed treatment for the Missouri Department of Mental Health. She was a featured presenter at a recent School Safety Academy sponsored by MSBA's Center for Education Safety, and she says it's important to create a supportive culture for teachers and school district staff through what she calls team care.
Team care is about how the whole building is supporting the workforce. How are you tag teaming? Are you checking in and out with people? Are you buddying up with someone so that you have an outlet that's an adult who's safe, who's appropriate, that you can vent when you need to, you can ask for help when you need to, you can tag out if you need to? Some school districts are really great about creating that team atmosphere to help people in the moment and to help them prepare for what the day might bring to them, and even to decompress or debrief after a particularly stressful day or event.
Jones adds teachers and other school staff also need to take care of themselves as individuals.
Now, teachers individually need to be doing all the same things that we would recommend children do. Get regular sleep, drink plenty of water, eat food that is healthy, engage in activities that you enjoy that have nothing to do with your role as a teacher. Surround yourself with supportive friends and family and neighbors, and that can build up your strength to go into a school every day and handle all of those things that you won't be able to control. If you've got a good baseline and you're feeling healthy and well, you'll be able to manage the stress so much better.
MSBA has joined with other state education groups as part of a mental wellness think tank to develop a plan to provide additional mental wellness assistance to those in K-12 education throughout Missouri. The General Assembly has changed state law related to school board candidate filing for this year. Filing now begins earlier, ends earlier, and is shorter, now closing between Christmas and New Year's Day. Candidate filing for the April 2022 school board elections will begin on December 7th and end on December 28th. Contact the MSBA Legal Department if you have questions about school board candidate filing this year. Be sure your school board is represented at the MSBA Fall Delegate Assembly, to be held on Friday, November 5th, in conjunction with the MSBA Annual Conference in Kansas City. The Delegate Assembly will be voting on position statements that will form the basis of MSBA's advocacy efforts during the coming year. Every MSBA-member school board is entitled to at least one voting delegate at the Delegate Assembly. And there's still time to register for the 2021 Annual Conference, held in cooperation with the Missouri Association of School Administrators. The event is the largest gathering of school leaders in Missouri each year and will be held at a new location in downtown Kansas City from November 5th through 7th. Several specialized pre-conference sessions will be held on November 4th, including workshops for board secretaries, board presidents, board member certification, and an entire series of sessions on school safety during the Safe Schools and Colleges Forum. During the conference itself, November 5th through 7th, there will be four general sessions featuring some outstanding speakers and more than 100 concurrent sessions on a wide range of topics, ranging from legal and legislative updates to school safety seminars, some sessions designed specifically for rural school districts, and presentations from school districts on innovative local programs. We'll also be conducting regional meetings during the conference, where you'll have the opportunity to meet with your colleagues from your area of the state and discuss issues of common interest. Registration information is available on the MSBA website. That's it for this month's edition of the MSBA Board Report. Thanks for allowing us to have some time at your board meeting, and so long from Columbia.
All right. Thank you, Colin. We'll move to 8.0, Special Reports from our Cabinet members. So Joel, we'll start. Finance and Facilities? I don't know.
Finance, we met this month, but Facilities, we did not.
Okay. That's what I thought.
Finance, we meet on the Tuesday before the board meetings, and we get information out to them, our financials and budget amendments on the Friday prior. So the state change has really been helpful in getting that information to them earlier. We went over all the consent agenda items on the finance, and we talked about our debt. There's an item on the agenda tonight that we're refinancing some debt, so that was a topic that we've got into pretty heavily. And then we went over the finance sections of the workshop data that was presented today.
All right. Thank you. Dr. McKinney, HR?
HR did meet. We talked about the substitute teacher pay rate increase that's on the board's agenda this evening. We also talked about ideas, the group. Thank you for that. Came up with some brain-
featuring some outstanding speakers and more than 100 concurrent sessions on a wide range of topics, ranging from legal and legislative updates to school safety seminars, some sessions designed specifically for rural school districts, and presentations from school districts on innovative local programs. We'll also be conducting regional meetings during the conference, where you'll have the opportunity to meet with your colleagues from your area of the state and discuss issues of common interest. Registration information is available on the MSBA website. That's it for this month's edition of the MSBA Board Report. Thanks for allowing us to have some time at your board meeting, and so long from Columbia.
All right, thank you, Colin. We'll move to eight point O, special reports from our cabinet members. So Joelle, we'll start. Finance and facilities, I don't know.
Finance, we met this month, but facilities, we did not.
Okay, that's what I thought.
Finance, we meet on the Tuesday before the board meetings, and we get information out to them, our financials and budget amendments on the Friday prior, so the state change has really been helpful in getting that information to them earlier. We went over all the consent agenda items on the finance, and we talked about our debt. There's an item on the agenda tonight that we're refinancing some debt, so that was a topic that we've got into pretty heavily. And then we went over the finance sections of the workshop data that was presented today.
All right, thank you. Dr. McKinney, HR?
HR did meet. We talked about the substitute teacher pay rate increase that's on the board's agenda this evening. We also talked about ideas, the group. Thank you for that. Came up with some brainstorming ideas for how to address, you know, mental wellness among our staff and make sure we're supporting our teachers and staff in the buildings, and so that was also a point of discussion.
Thank you. Dr. Sparks, your three committees.
Teaching and learning actually did not meet in the span between these two board meetings. We meet again on Tuesday, so I'll have an update next month. The Technology Board Advisory had two topics of focus, esports and the continual expansion of esports. And I just have to put out a little plug, our esports team just beat the reigning national champions this last week. So some really exciting stuff for our students, and we'll continue to expand programming and esports, a lot of enthusiasm around that and what's appropriate for moving forward. And then we also had a presentation from our co-pilot students, really going over what is a part of the co-pilot website and starting to gain feedback about how to make that website even more robust to support our families. So we've got some great, exciting things happening in terms of the development of that. For student life, that meeting was last week and had conversations around athletics and community education programming, so getting some feedback regarding those two topics, as well as we've been spending some time talking about digital wellness. How do we support digital wellness through our district website as well? What kind of supports do we want to put there for families to be able to access and have as a resource? And then finally, we're starting to delve into some social-emotional assessment tools for work with students, so began that conversation as well.
All right, thank you. We'll move to nine point O, which is our action items by consent. We have items nine point O one to nine point one four. Would anyone want to remove any of these items for individual consideration? Okay. Hearing none, do we have a motion to approve consent items nine point O one to nine point one four, noting that there are none in nine oh seven to nine oh eight? Motion by Mike, second?
Second.
Second by Matt. So we'll take this time if you have any questions that you'd like to ask or comments before we go to a vote. Okay, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion carries. Individual action items, we do have one and ten point O one, which is the bond refinancing debt service fund, go-to-market resolution, so Joelle?
Yes, as a best practice in the finance department and as a leadership team, we continue to look at our debt and interest rates. I mean, the economy changes and rates change. We do have some 2014 general obligation bonds, which were actually to build Russell is what, and some other projects in the district. The interest rates are at such place and these bonds are callable that we can refinance, just like you would do on your mortgage, to save money in interest. We can refinance these, and right now, based on the rates today, which we don't think will change much by the time we issue this refinancing, we're looking at about a 10% savings in our debt service on this issue, which is right at $4 million. So that $4 million is in the debt fund. Again, it's not in operations. We would love to have that $4 million savings in operations, but it is in the debt, but saving money in debt is also good, as it's like building equity in your home, so when you have less debt to pay off, equity for the school district is there for future bond issues. This is the first step, did a multi-step process, and this is just the board approving a go-to-market resolution, and then we'll start working with our bond attorneys and financial advisors on all the details that go beyond behind such a thing.
All right. Do I have a motion to approve item ten point O one as presented?
So moved.
Motion by Christie, second?
Second.
Second by Megan. Any questions regarding the motion? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion carries. Eleven point O one, reports. For the record, it looks like we have two. For the record item, these items are being presented by information only, eleven point O one O one is the Green Light Plan. Board members can contact any of the cabinet members with questions on that. And PAT evaluation, you want to contact Dr. Sparks if you have any questions on that particular for the record item. Eleven point O two, we have no items. O three, we have a review of, it looks like, four policies, a first reading review. So if you have any questions, you can contact Dr. McKinney regarding any of those items as well. So we'll move to twelve point O, which is citizen comments regarding non-agen items. So we will hear comments right now from anyone who would like to step forward on a non-agen item. Remember, it's three minutes per comment, and we have a total of 30 minutes for this portion of the meeting. When I call your name, please come forward. Make sure that you're speaking on a topic or bringing a topic that hasn't been addressed or a new portion of a topic that's already been addressed. So, and reminding again everyone, just to be respectful as people come up and speak. So the first person is Filia Davenport.
All right. So, good evening. My name's Filia Davenport. I'm a woman of color, a mother, and an associate professor. I have seen the list of the books that some parents wish to be removed from not only the curriculum but the library. There seems to be a pattern with the majority of these books, their connection to African-American and LGBT stories and experiences. You may think that we do not matter or that we do not exist in your school district, but we do. I will not tolerate, I will not stand by and watch you erase my people's truths, my people's stories. We are more than slaves in domestics. We are doctors, educators, lawyers, writers, entertainers, mothers, fathers, sisters, and brothers. We are part of this community, this city, this state, and this country. If you think having these books available is going to cause emotional trauma and harm to your children, then take away their phones, their access to the internet, television, film, or basically human contact. Many of these books or plays are autobiographical and create a bridge or connection to students who do not see themselves or their stories being told. They see those they connect with go through trauma and not just survive, but thrive. I see my story in some of these books. My story as a 16-year-old was filled with trauma, and it would have helped me to see someone like me thrive in a story versus depicted as a slave or a maid. Maybe if I had that, I would have known at 16 that I wasn't alone. I did not have the nuclear family or the American ideal family of the 1950s. It wasn't Leave It To Beaver, but I wouldn't trade my story for anyone else's, but I also won't have it disregarded either. Here is a quote from one of the books on your list to ban, "Fences" by August Wilson. "Some people build fences to keep people out, and other people build fences to keep people in. So look at yourselves. Truly look at yourselves and tell me, are you building a fence to keep me out or let me in? All I have seen, experienced, and heard is that you would prefer to erase me. So thank you. Thank you for welcoming me into your community."
All right, thank you. Next is, forgive me if I mispronounce any of these names, Mary Kur.
Good evening. So when the challenge books come before you, the school board, I ask you to keep these statistics in mind. Two out of five LGBTQ children have seriously contemplated suicide. Females aged 16 to 19 are four times more likely than the general public to be sexually assaulted. Nine out of 10 young people of black or mixed ethnicity have witnessed racist language at school. This is the reality of what our youth face today. Many of the books being challenged are firsthand accounts of what the author experienced growing up. When we say these books are inappropriate, we are telling our children that their experiences, their life, is inappropriate. Many times, these books are the first time a child sees themselves and realizes they aren't alone, that others have had similar journeys to theirs. When we ban books, we are planting seeds of bigotry. As educators, our job is to prepare students for life in the real world. These books teach affirmation, tolerance, and compassion. They allow students to become aware of the world as it really exists and apply that knowledge to real life. The school's job is to serve all children. We cannot leave children in the dark with restricted and narrow worldview. These timely topics teach empathy and help our children define their own values and opinions. These books are not required readings. Our children have the choice to read them or not. As parents and in our home, our own home, it is our right to instill beliefs that align with our values. At school, however, what takes precedence is the safety of every child. Show our educators that we value their insight into the merit of these literary works. We trust them to handle these sensitive topics with care and concern. Most importantly, show our students that our actions align with our commitment of maintaining an inclusive community. Let Limburg stand out as a school with character, where every child is treated with dignity and valued for being their authentic self. Let's commit to our children that they won't end up as a statistic. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Next, Maki Rendelman.
I'm Maki Rendelman. Tonight, I want to talk about safety. And before I start, I would ask individuals who are under 18 years old to leave the room or stay with parental consent. The reason why we are all here is our children. The citizens, parents, administrators, and the board members have common ground, which is our most precious gift, our future, and the biggest task we are entrusted with, our children. I praise the effort that the school has been doing. We are creating safety procedures at building entrances. We follow the science and guidelines. While facing almost impossible situations, we are finding solutions to keep our education going. I watched the Limburg speaker series about staying safe online. I appreciate the work that our IT is doing with the devices of the students. Our students' devices are safe since it filters out pornography or explicit adult content. Security auditor software scans for nudity, cyberbullying, suicide, and violence. These filters and scans are crucial for safety of our children. Policy KLB says the board has the ultimate responsibility for library materials to be used by the district. While the administration is insisting to follow the outdated library policies, you, the board members, have the ultimate authority on this. Please exercise the power that the community entrusted you with. You can take all these books off the shelf right away. It's all about the children and their safety. Let me be clear that this is not about librarians or book diversity, but rather about the content that is established as federally defined pornography in our schools. These books are available without any parental guidance or consent, an issue clearly raised to the board in August. One picture is worth more than 1,000 words. If this pornographic material was online, it would have been filtered out. Let's do the same in the library. That is my urgent call, urgent call to action for the board. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Our next speaker is Stella Timman.
Hello, Limberborn. My name is Stella Timman, and I'm here to talk to you about the group of parents who want to get rid of books that have black, brown, LGBTQ-plus characters from Limburg High School's library. The books talk about how the people need to fit in the world and how fought to make our world accept them. So I think it would be wrong to get rid of them. First of all, books that talk about black and brown people are a part of our community, and we can't just get rid of them because some parents don't like the content. We all have the right to hear and read different stories about people who are special to our society. Secondly, I would like to talk about the LGBTQ-plus books. I myself can't stand around while parents are trying to get rid of these books. I am a part of LGBTQ society. I am gender queer, so I couldn't just stand by. When my mom told me about this, I was angry that a group of parents want to get rid of books because of how someone identifies or who and how they love. It is foolish and completely unfair to consider this, just because they don't agree. Books like these helped me see that I was needing a change on how I looked at myself. They have shown me that I can be comfortable at school or anywhere. Stories like these also show me that everyone has rights. It doesn't matter what skin color you are or where you came from. These people changed our society, and they changed it for the better. We learn about these people to learn about what they did to make black, brown, and LGBTQ-plus people feel better about themselves. These books aren't the problem. The parents who are trying to get them banned is. These would harm our school by not considering the fact that we have so many black, brown kids at our school and on top of that LGBTQ at our school. Let's save these books and keep them. Let's let them keep our employees, our teachers, and our students. Thank you for listening.
Sorry, thank you. Diane Dragon?
Good evening. It's Dyslexia Awareness Month. This is the fourth year of attending board meetings and requesting adequate intervention for children with reading disabilities. This district is still significantly lacking in services, training, and basic understanding of dyslexia. I am not exaggerating when I say in every single IEP meeting I attend in this district, there are significant legal violations, every single one. Your absolute refusal to meaningfully train your staff in basic IDEA law and to understand how to read educational assessments, understand goal-setting and data-tracking, is embarrassing if not bordering on deliberate indifference. Your staff does not have the knowledge they need to ensure SSD is acting in the best interest of our kids and within the bounds of law. Horts around this country have lost patience with schools failing to teach kids to read. Schools are losing class actions, state complaints, and individual due process cases routinely now. Last week, a significant victory was handed down to parents in Nevada in the Clark County School District for a series of violations identical to what happened routinely in this district, violations I have seen happen in this last month in this district. Clark County now owes those parents approximately half a million dollars. And that's not counting the attorney's fees, which will still be calculated. You are on notice. You cannot hide behind SSD or their incompetence. The ruling handed down by a judge was a fellow federal public defender like myself. I can only assume part of what went into that decision was his knowledge of the absolute devastation caused by shoving a child through a broken educational system and pushing them out into the world marginally literate. The judge held that schools violated the child's rights to a free and appropriate public education by refusing to consider the concerns of parents, by ignoring outside evaluations, and by refusing to discuss during the IEP the types of programs that would be available to the child in the district. He held methodology is a key factor in the IEP. It must be used with fidelity and consistency. It cannot be mixed and matched. It must be research-based, it must be systematic, cumulative, and rigorously implemented. He specifically required Orton-Gillingham methods be named in the IEP when necessary. SSD routinely says they do not have to discuss methodology with parents. We deserve to know what programs will be used with our child. All that is offered in most schools is All that is offered in most schools is Spire. It's OG Light at Best. It's the hamburger helper of reading intervention. A little bit of everything, a lot of nothing, and very little meat. Your coordinators are recorded, stating fidelity guidelines for Spire are mere recommendations. They pride themselves in mixing and matching. It's not working. The data shows the children in Spire are not improving. I'm aware of how our dyslexics are treated. Are you?
Next, John Lieber.
I've been a resident of Sunset Hills for about 30 years, raised two of our three children, my wife and I, in the Limburg School District. I know a couple of gay people, very nice people, smart, intelligent, and support the community. The issue is not anti-gay, anti-LGBTQ. The issue is content in some of the books in the library at the senior high school, where the books were introduced without parental consent or involvement. Quoting from some of the books, I guess I'll call it an app, I'm not real computer literate, but it's a called Grindr, G-R-I-N-D-R, Where to Meet People Like You. And it says, "Grindr has an age minimum of 18 years old." Now, this is in the library. How many students at Limburg High School are 18 years or older? This is an adult book, not a child's book. Another book calls out that if you are a young reader, I'm hyphenating some things here, you may not be ready for the content in this chapter, then simply skip this whole chapter. Now, how many 14, 15, 16, 17-year-old young adults, as soon as you see that, they're going to skip that and go on to something else? Give me a break. Impossible. Another portion of the book, the ins and outs of gay sex. We thought you all, we taught you all about straight sex. Who taught? My question is, who taught you about straight sex? Were they? The writer implies that if we are not supportive of gay sex, that we have been institutionalized homophobics. This is absolutely absurd, and the name-calling does nothing for anybody. I think there's got to be a legitimate discussion about children's issues. I was a Boy Scout leader, committee chairman of the Boy Scout troop, my wife and I, for a number of years, and dealing with these young men. They have issues dealing with their own emotions and matured development. Not being involved with Girl Scout program, I'm sure the same thing occurred there. The point is, there's a lot of things goes on in the minds of these young people. Anyway, okay, I guess I'm done.
All right, thank you. All right, next is Deanna Bragmo.
Lot of interesting comments tonight. I want to state, I'm here because I want to talk about the U.S. history curriculum in the high school. I'm not here to talk about critical race theory. But I will say that my husband and I feel that the history curriculum that's being taught at Limburg, and this opinion is shared by other parents, it's being taught through a lens that resembles critical race theory ideology. And the reason that that's concerning is that the underlying message of that ideology is that the United States, its constitution, its capitalist structure, and its interlocking economic, political, educational, and justice systems and other systems are built on and perpetuate a society of the haves and have-nots, the powerful and the powerless, the oppressor and the oppressed, and the natural conclusion is that America is fundamentally bad. And that's the message that I feel is being taught to our U.S. history students. So in order to determine whether or not my gut feelings were accurate, I literally spent countless hours looking at every single slide, within every single slide deck, viewing all the embedded videos, the Paradox, the Google Doc links, reviewing related assignments, and all other resources that I could access, starting from the first day of school until the present. And ultimately, based on that research, my husband and I concluded that our concerns were in fact warranted. I have had numerous exchanges with high school administrators in an effort to address these concerns, but each attempt has been met with an adamant assertion that U.S. history is being taught in an objective and balanced manner, and that's why I'm here. This corrosive and divisive ideology manifests itself in the U.S. history class, not so much in the content, but in how it's delivered. I think that the contact is factually accurate for the most part, but there are opinion and judgment statements woven throughout the presentation that, when viewed individually, might seem harmless, but taken as a whole, weaves a very different story. And, boy, three minutes goes really fast.
Next, Merle Sauer.
L-A-W-S spells laws, Lorenz Alonso Watts Chamia. That was your 2017 campaign slogan. You were elected. You asked us to vote for laws, but you and this administration are not following the laws. Missouri Law 160.516 says the school board must approve and adopt the curriculum used by the district. Board policy IF says that the board will review and approve the curriculum the year prior to being used, so funds can be allocated to purchase materials to support the curriculum. I could not figure out how the activities and lessons in my child's class agreed to the American literature curriculum. The teacher syllabus states the course is an in-depth study of American literature. Nothing follows that curriculum. I began asking questions, and the board-approved curriculums on the school website became inaccessible and still are. After weeks of emails, the head principal finally sent me what he called a "living curriculum" and said it would be approved this December. This is not in line with Missouri law or board policy. Some parents noted their child should be reading Lord of the Flies, for example, but is instead learning about voter suppression. In my child's class, they should be reading The Great Gatsby, but instead, a recent activity included the plight of illegal immigrants. There was no perspective from Americans living in border towns and how illegal immigration affects them, nor was there information presented on how illegal immigration lowers wages for lower and middle-class citizens. The information offered was limited and one-sided. Limited information is a form of brainwashing. Board policy IIA states that staff members are expected to promote objectivity and critical analysis. There is no critical analysis if various sides to an issue are not presented. The Missouri School Improvement Plan states that the library will support and enrich the curriculum. Our school library's new purchases seem to focus heavily on the trauma that marginalized groups suffer. The majority of books are realistic or speculative fiction and tell stories of people who live under systemic oppression, which is part of Marxist critical theory. This is limiting and focusing student book choices to a false narrative of systemic oppression that is not based in reality. So I don't see this in a board-approved curriculum. The oppression-focused purchases of our school libraries may be an inappropriate spending of taxpayer funds. Most importantly, going forward, the living curriculum that I did receive was very vague, almost meaningless for parents. The requirements of a curriculum under board policy IF requires that the curriculum includes things like lessons, activities, themes, books, materials, supplementary, and enrichment materials. Next month, the administration will be presenting curriculums to the board. Parents deserve transparency as to what their children will be learning in school. These new curriculums must include as much detailed information as possible and meet board policy IF, or they should not be approved. And for the board, especially L-A-W-S, I suggest you review the rules on using a living curriculum and bring our district's classrooms and library spending back in line with the curriculums that were board-approved at least one year prior to being used. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Joy Long.
I decided I was coming tonight anyway, so I am going to speak to you now as a parent. I really appreciate you giving me the opportunity to speak. In addition to being a staff member, I'm also a Limburg parent. I have four children in the Limburg School District, one at the high school, two at Truman, and one in elementary, still my last year. I understand that some district parents are very upset with some of the work that we may be doing around inclusion, equity, and diversity, and some other concerns I can understand. But I do want to speak to you to encourage you to continue this work, and also just thank you for hiring Dr. Map to lead the work. My children look very different from me. All four of my children joined our family through adoption, and all of my children are African-American. They have been at Limburg since kindergarten. They have received an amazing education. That's really why I was excited to join Limburg as a staff member after being a full-time parent, because I knew I would have amazing colleagues, because my kids had amazing teachers. This school year, I've been really troubled by some of the things my children have experienced at the secondary level in middle school and high school. On four separate occasions that I know of, during the first quarter of this year, my children have been called the N-word directly or have been around when someone was yelling it in their vicinity. On one occasion, a student in one of my children's classroom colored his skin brown with a marker and then said, "I've unlocked a new word. Now I can start using it," and began to say the N-word repeatedly. These instances were really upsetting to my children, as you can imagine. In some instances, they did advocate for themselves and said to the students, "You know what you're saying is offensive. I'd like you to stop." And they were told, "It's a free country. I can say what I want." I could tell you lots of racist comments made to my kids through the years, but my time is short. I feel that four times in a quarter is just too many. I also know discrimination is a worldwide problem. It is not just a Limburg problem, but we can't pretend it doesn't exist here. I believe this generation of children has the potential to make even greater strides towards unity than those of us who have gone before them. But we do need to continue the work to help our kids see the amazing strengths in each other instead of perpetuating division. I believe that that is really what our equity and diversity work is designed to do. I've observed Dr. Map to be what I call a servant leader. He is in our schools, consulting with us on issues. He's high-fiving students on arrival and dismissal. They know him, and he's been training our staff. I thank you for prioritizing this work by hiring him, and I ask you to continue this work because in doing so, I believe you honor all of our students. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Laura Falsich.
I'm going to kind of improvise what I wrote here a little bit. At the July board meeting, I asked why Limburg had opted out of the desegregation program in 2011, though it continues to 2023. I have still not received any type of answer as to why, which actually would address exactly what was just mentioned. If there were more, you know, if the segregation was still going on and we had the kids bust in, it would be a totally different situation. That would not be happening as much, I do not believe, because it did not happen when I was here. We are at a very important crossroads that will be written about in history books. I think it would be a great idea to seriously consider what side of history you want to be on. As far as the books that are being mentioned, it has nothing to do with race or it has anything to do with sexuality. It's the sexuality that is listed in the book, the pornography that is in the book, the pictures that are in the book. If we can edit out those paragraphs about those experiences, they're not appropriate for the children. Keep the rest of the book. That's fine. That's not the problem. The problem is what is being said to young children. Considering that Limburg has had, let's see here, "As a school with a history of teachers having inappropriate sexual relations with minors, as well as questionable conduct, made public concerning Mr. Wilder, Dr. Jones, and another teacher that I don't remember his name, but I saw him on the news years ago, the books in question and any similar material are not a smart move. It only grooms the children and opens the door for more blurred lines for teachers and predators. Psychologists have stated that early exposure to adult-themed material can lead to addiction, depression, social anxiety, premature sexual interactions with peers, grooming by adults for sexual interaction, confusion about healthy expression of sexuality, putting oneself in precarious situations, sexual assault, ruining of reputation by posting revealing photos of oneself on social media or sexting, isolation from peers whose parents may feel the need or may feel the child as an unsavory influence, doing harm to others, self-injury, suicidal ideation, whatever, and/or attempts, desire for increased stimulation, other high-risk behaviors." As somebody who was diagnosed with depression in sixth grade and has dealt with it my entire life, I understand what they're talking about with the depression and suicidal thoughts and such, especially that it's, you know, Mental Health Awareness Month kind of ties into that as well. I realize that Limburg is going to do whatever it likes, but for Limburg to ignore parents and alum concerning these topics, as well as reading scores, removing class rankings, over-sexualizations of kids, sexualization of kids with constant references to gender and binary status and all these things, even in a math app, I mean, as well as these books, please remember, you know, there are things that can happen from that. Now, I'm not trying to threaten anybody, but the consequences could be in the form of funding. Parents are already pulling their children out of Limburg, which will eventually hurt the school financially.
All right, I have to cut you off, because I cut her.
Okay.
Yeah. Thank you, though. Last speaker, Jessica Huff.
Good evening, and thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. My name is Jessica Huff, and I will be reading a statement on behalf of the Limburg Equity and Diversity Coalition, also known as LEED. The Limburg Equity and Diversity Coalition has learned that 15 books in the Limburg High School Library have been challenged by a group of citizens for removal. LEED does not support the banning of books. We believe that for teenagers, the accessibility of diverse literature, including materials which adults in their lives may not be comfortable with, is vitally important. It is essential that the materials in the library are of a wide variety, so that the needs and interests of all students are supported at the different stages of their personal development. It is also important for students to read about and understand lived experiences that are different from their own. Of course, everyone is entitled to their opinions about a book, but they do not have the right to limit another person's access to information. Our librarians have a professional obligation to ensure that all members of the student body have free and equitable access to a diverse range of resources that are inclusive. This past Tuesday, Dr. Jeremy Map, Director of Inclusion, Equity, and Diversity for Limburg Schools, gave an informative presentation on how inclusion, equity, and diversity work will be implemented in our schools. We appreciate Dr. Map's acknowledgement that each student must be treated with dignity and respect and the importance of fostering a culture of belonging for all. This cannot happen when books in our library about race and identity are no longer accessible to students. As Limburg begins the review process on these challenged items, we ask that you keep the entire student body in mind. Thank you.
Thank you. So that concludes our speakers or folks addressing. So thank you to everyone who did come forward and address the board, and we'll continue with the remaining agenda. with the remaining agenda items. Takes us to 13.0, which is recess. We've already conducted our executive session, so there's no need to move to the 14.0, so we'll move to adjournment. Do you have a motion to adjourn Board Meeting 1541?
So moved.
Motion by Matt, second.
Second.
Second by Kathy. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Board Meeting 1541 is adjourned. Thank you.
When is this school going to release?